And Commissioner Macon. And with that, I believe we have, and there she is. And we have one item on the agenda this evening to discuss the Unified Development Code Analysis Project.
Good evening, Chair and Commission. So this is a quick work session item to be able to bring you all up to speed. And give you a chance to be able to hear about this project that we're working on right now. And so the Unified Development Code, as you know, is our code that we utilize on a day to day basis when we're reviewing zoning applications, looking at different types of development, what can come in and how does it get built? Through our comprehensive plan, you'll recall that we talked about a lot of different adjustments that the community would like to see. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that Unified Development Code and the Aspire Plan both talk to each other. And that if we need to make some adjustments, that we find what those adjustments might be, note them and then start making kind of a task list of which items do we want to go after. So tonight, we're bringing the consultant with us. Clarion Associates is here. This would be a first step. This is an opportunity for you all to be able to provide us with some feedback that you know of or that you want to share with them, that things that you know of that we need to be looking at. This won't be the only time that you'll have. So if you think of something later, you want to send us an email or something like that, that's great. And then it'll also come back to you later on. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt and Jenny with Clarion Associates.
Let you start there.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks, Jeremy. My commission members, good to see you. Thank you for the opportunity to present. Matt Goble with Clarion Associates. My colleague Jenny and I have a presentation for you, like Jeremy said, about the code project, the update project, and who we are. And I guess I'll start with that right there. Clarion Associates is a consulting firm based in Denver. We've been in business now 30-plus years, going on 35. We are a very small firm. We've got about 10 folks in Denver, about the same number in Chapel Hill. And we focus on plans and plan implementation. We have a diverse set of backgrounds. I'm a planner and an attorney by training. We have a lot of planners, other disciplines in the firm. We really focus, Jenny and I focus really on codes, on zoning codes that update plans, like the Aspire Plan. And so that's why we're excited to be here, because you've got this new plan and we want to make sure you have the tools to implement it. You can see there that we've worked around the country. We have a lot of experience in Texas. I grew up in Dallas, I went to UT, so I've really wanted to keep our work strong in Texas. We're working in New Braunfels right now. Just got the McKinney Code adopted, that won a Texas APA Award, which we were proud of. But we're also doing other projects around the country, like Santa Fe, New Mexico. So I think I just say that to stress that we have a lot of experience and that we can bring a lot of optional approaches and best practices to you for your consideration. This is the team that's going to be working on the project. You'll hear from Jenny and myself tonight. I'll be the project manager. You'll meet Maggie and Holly on future trips. But we keep it small. We don't like to spread the work too thinly, so we keep it a very focused group. You'll probably see Jenny and myself for most of the project. Our bread and butter is, like I said, plan implementation. And so we've worked in a lot of different communities on implementing their plans. These are just two examples of different places, Sedona, Arizona, and Deton, Texas, where we were able to go in and work with an established plan and really develop a tailored assessment report of the strengths and weaknesses of that plan and how it could be implemented in their ordinance. And then ultimately, that led to changes in the zoning map as well. I said the assessment report, that's a really foundational part of every project that we do. And that's what we're doing in Flugerville. It's just this assessment report right now. It's not scoped out as the actual rewrite of the code, it's the assessment. We like these because they're always different. There are always different issues in different places. There's common themes that we often see, but McKinney is a very different place from New Braunfels, from Sedona, from Clark County, Nevada. So it's an opportunity to really hear the different voices in these places and to really understand what makes Flugerville special and what do you all think of when you think of Flugerville? And how does that translate into a zoning code? And what should development look like? And what do you like over the past 10 years of this explosive growth? And what do you think you could have done better? And so this is our opportunity to really hear from people and tell the story of how the development regulations you have have resulted in the built environment you have and how potentially you might want to do some course corrections or strengthen the tools that you have in place now. So the code assessment is a foundation document for any future code update. And it's a place where we can really listen to people. Oftentimes, our code assessments will take the form of a two-part product. On the left-hand side, you can see there's a narrative. That's where we're going to tell the high story, the big, high-level story. And that's going to be, you know, well illustrated. That's the piece that'll get the most press, the most wide distribution, I should say. And then there's also a detailed supporting table on the right. And that's going to go through section by section of your current UDC and talk about strengths and weaknesses. There's a lot of strengths, I should discuss that right up front. It's one of the better codes that we've seen, honestly, coming in. And so this is an opportunity to talk about refinements. And we're not talking about, I don't think, radical course correction in any part of the code, because it's well-written, it's thoughtful, it's comprehensive. This is an opportunity to go back in and strengthen tools that you have and maybe rethink some of the finer points. That's the intro about who we are and what we work on. The project itself is scheduled to last from now through the summer, finishing up in the fall. We are kicking off the project now with a lot of stakeholder interviews. So we're going to be, this is our first day. We just got here today. We did a great tour with Jeremy and his staff to see just the examples of different places, examples of different projects that you like, that could be improved on. We'll be doing a lot more of these stakeholder interviews. We're going to be putting a survey online to get people's feedback. We're going to be putting a project website up where all the project materials will be located. And that'll live up there for the life of the project. We're going to start off on this trip with stakeholder interviews with internal stakeholders, so city departments. We met with Parks and Rec today, tomorrow's going to be City Manager's Office, Fire, Public Works, groups like that. We're going to follow that up with another trip focused on more external engagement with the development community, HOAs, things like that. And we're going to work with Jeremy to get that set up. That'll be later in the summer. And then we actually do the drafting. And that's when we sit down and we really put our detailed work into a product and we synthesize that with all the feedback that we've heard from you all. And then we start to refine that, working with staff. And we do a staff draft first and make edits, and then we refine that. And then we start to shop that around to the community and get feedback as well. So the whole assessment report should be done early fall. We're looking at probably late September, right after Labor Day, something like that. As Jeremy said, this is really a first step. This is an introduction to the project for you all. And after we get through our presentation, which is going to be pretty short, we really were hoping to spend this work session just hearing from you all about your priorities. You know, at first glance, what do you think are some of the issues that you'd like to see? So that's where we're going with this presentation. Public input is really key in a project like this. We've got to hear from the folks in Flugerville about their thoughts on zoning and planning issues. So we'll be casting a broad net. We'll be working virtually and in person as well to try to reach people in a broad variety of ways. We heard that you all had a really robust participation program for the Aspire project during COVID. And so I think we can maybe learn some lessons from that. And again, like I said, we'll have an online website that's going to be a home base for the project with all our materials, opportunities for people to sign up for meetings, all that kind of stuff. So that's all the background. The balance of this presentation is going to be talking specifically about Flugerville. And again, just wanted to give you a flavor of how we think about zoning issues, all the different buckets of ideas that go into a project like this. Hopefully, that'll get you all thinking about places that you'd really like to dig in for conversation on improvements to the code. So again, we're going to go through these slides and then we'll come back to you all and hear hopefully about your goals. It starts with the plan. It always starts with a plan, I mentioned that. And the Aspire Plan is an interesting document. It's well organized. It's got a really thoughtful framework with this, what's it called, the Wellness Wheel, I think it's called. And you've got the guiding principles that are listed on the slide that provide, you know, it's a traditional planning framework, but it's a good organized way for us to think about the themes of the community, how it wants to grow. And our job now is to kind of be methodical and walk through this and walk through the specific goals and guiding principles and to see if you've got the zoning tools that are in place to implement those. And so with that, we're going to start getting into the specifics. So I will give it to my colleague Jenny to walk you through, who she has spent a lot of time with you, please.
Thanks. Hi. Good to be here. Good to see you all. Thanks for having us. As Matt mentioned, I'm going to get a little methodical with you. I will talk a little bit about how we approach this kind of project. So taking a look at the plan and when we compare that with what the zoning says, what are we looking for? What are we trying to see if it works or if changes are needed? So at the highest level, taking a look at some of your guiding principles, diverse and equitable, community-oriented, fiscally responsible. We just picked a few to give you some examples of how we go about looking at the code versus the plan. So one of the plan goals under diverse and equitable guiding principle is to diversify the housing supply, the types, locations, and try and meet community needs in different phases of life. I know you all know this because you're very familiar with the plan. But what are we doing when we're trying to figure out if your code supports that? One of the first things is to take a look at the use table and the zoning districts and to see how many different kinds of housing is that use table saying are permitted here? And is it giving you single-family dwellings and apartments or are there other options in between? When you're trying to reach different income levels, different age levels, you want to have as many diverse housing types as you can. And so we are looking in the code to see, does it allow that now? And if it doesn't, where and how can we make some improvements to that? Another example, the code emphasizes 10-minute neighborhoods. Well, how do you get that? When development is actually happening, how does the code enable that? One thing is to make sure that you're enabling compact, walkable development, focusing on putting uses together. We heard a lot today in the tour about single-family mixed-use zoning districts, but also that the mixed-use part of that sometimes doesn't show up in those areas immediately. And it is often used as a way to get some flexibility in the standards, but not necessarily to produce that mixed use. Well, how do you get that if your current zoning isn't getting you that? So that's one thing that we'll take a look at. Focusing on infill, I know that from what we saw today, there are still a good number of areas where you can do greenfield development, but that does run out. And I feel like you want to have in that code for when the time comes, more opportunities to make infill happen. So you just adopted some corridor-based, corridor- and node-based districts. That's a good opportunity to see some infill along there. And you also just want to make sure that you are using your existing infrastructure. You've already invested in it. And so having infill show up where that is, instead of kind of leapfrogging out into those greenfields, the code can help to make sure that happens. Last one on this slide is thinking about sustainability. I saw a bit in the landscaping section about thinking some more about how you're using water. And so does the current landscaping requirement promote conservation of water? Does it sort of not think too much about what kinds of plants are appropriate or what plants are? And as Matt said, this is actually a pretty good code to start with. You have a lot of these like foundation blocks in there. And so I think that this project is taking a look at how to refine those to get a little bit closer to some of these goals. A couple of other things similar to this topic, and I have sort of covered some of this in advance. Diversify housing supply. Right now, it is mainly focused on allowing single dwellings. And your code mentions duplexes, multifamily, and manufactured housing. In truth, there are only so many ways that you can house people, but there are more than this. So we can take a look at where those different types are appropriate. Little cottage developments, maybe some more, like missing middle is a popular term. But instead of the really big apartment buildings or the detached or attached single dwellings, there's a lot that can happen in between. Triplexes, mansion apartments where it looks like one house, but there can be four or five units in there. There are a lot of different things that people are trying to do when they're trying to get to more affordable housing. And so we can think about that with you. We met with parks earlier today. It sounds like they're doing a great job, particularly with trails, and making sure that all neighborhoods do have access to parks and open space. But they told us about some things that they'd like to look at. So we'll think about how to help parks look towards the future as you continue to grow and make sure that people still have that access and that those trails connect up and are a viable way to get around town. And thinking about the infrastructure, trying to kind of coordinate the standards to facilitate infill, as I mentioned, make use of what you already have instead of investing in extending it. 10-minute neighborhoods. I know you just did your corridor districts, but I think there are some other things that you could do with mixed use and maybe adjustments to your single-purpose districts, like your office and retail and neighborhood services, to kind of pull more of those things together in one spot. We will take a very close look at the zoning districts you have and think about, and we would love to hear from you all about this this evening, are there new districts needed to get the kind of development you want? Are there any adjustments we can make to those existing districts? Like the neighborhood services one is a little bit unusual in our experience. Most places want to have that. You already have it. And so is it being used? Can it help you get what you want in terms of development? Take a look at the dimensional standards. I think we saw a lot of, not huge lots, but pretty big lots, single dwellings with, you know, standard setbacks. Are there things that you can do to? Different kinds of development. We heard a lot about PUDs. And in many cases, when we see those in different communities, they rely on those to give the flexibility that the base code doesn't. So I think something that we're going to look at is a way that that code can offer different flexible options so that you don't always have to turn to a PUD or a negotiated development to see that, you know, something that may be a little bit unusual, but doesn't kind of rise to the level of creating a whole different PUDs. We'll try and help with that where we can. We've heard about downtown and downtown east. And so we can think about how to enable development in that area so that you have a kind of thriving downtown that's a destination. We took a look at your use regulations. Again, I think you are light-years ahead of certain communities that are still encouraging things like bone crushing and distillation. You don't have too many obsolete uses that we saw in there, but maybe there are some that you're just not seeing anymore. Think about getting rid of the ones that you don't use, making sure that you have kind of newer ones that we're seeing pop up. We saw a couple of data centers that are being built. That's one thing that many communities don't have in their codes and they're trying to deal with them. So we can take a look at those and other uses that are popping up to see where to accommodate those. You have land use conditions, which we often refer to as use-specific standards. But those can be really important because what you can do with them is say, all right, if we want to allow this somewhere, but we want to have some conditions around it just to make sure that it mitigates the impacts. I think using land use conditions for some uses can be really helpful. Then you can permit them by right and you don't have to have as many special approvals in some cases if you have the right standards around them. Those standards can have to do with operating hours. It can have to do with, you know, where is the parking lot? Is it aimed at an adjacent residential development? It can have to do with setbacks, buffers, all those kinds of things. But those standards can sometimes enable uses to be permitted by right instead of requiring special approvals. Underlying all of this is to just make sure that the zoning districts and the land uses, those kind of base elements of the code, support what your future land use map says. Here is what we want to see in this community. Development standards are a big part of all of the assessments that we do, all of the codes that we rewrite. Here are the different sections which you are all familiar with because you work with this code. Access and connectivity came up a lot today. An emphasis on kind of pulling things together and giving people ways to get around that aren't necessarily all focused on driving. Landscaping and screening, I think you have some really good landscaping standards. We've heard that there could be some additional flexibility in how different requirements are applied in different contexts. Building and site design, this kind of demonstrates, we heard a little bit about pulling buildings up to the street and putting the parking inside instead of, you know, having a street that's just lined with different parking lots and doesn't have any landscaping or anything to kind of soften that up. So we can take a look at those standards, see if there are areas where historic preservation standards could apply. Make sure outdoor lighting is working the way you want it to. So do you want to focus on maybe being more of a dark sky community? It's pretty simple to get some basic standards into a code that address that. And parking is always a favorite thing for people to talk about in assessments and code rewrites. And so we'll see where you want to come out on that, more or less, or just leave it alone. Here are some other illustrations that deal with development standards that we will be taking a look at as we go through the code. How can they be tailored to different contexts? So the corridors, downtown, you have some of that. We will look to see, are there ways to improve it? And hear from you all what you think on that topic. Talked a couple of times about 10-minute neighborhoods, won't focus on that anymore. Landscaping and parking requirements, there are a lot of things that you can do with those two areas of regulation. And one thing is to help them support environmental goals. So climate-appropriate plantings, the code has stuff in there about that, about plants that are able to withstand drought, which is not infrequent here. Want them to be heat-friendly, I guess, if that's a term. And then just in terms of parking lots, do you have shade cover? Or are you just saying in the landscape island, put in a shrub and we'll call it a day? You're not doing that, so that's good. We can look at some other things to maybe help you with those areas of regulation. Review procedures are kind of the thing that often comes up with the community who comes in for development and they have a lot to say about it. So a couple of the things that we look at when reviewing this is, does the procedure, as it is written out, match the practice? And if it doesn't, that can be very frustrating, both for staff who are trying to explain, no, no, this is how it's done, or for people who are trying to understand, how do I get from A to B? Like, how do I get from my proposal to my approval when the code doesn't clearly say, here are the steps? So that's something to take a look at with procedures. Are there objective approval criteria? That's pretty important so that everybody knows, if I propose this and it meets the standards, you will say yes. And because we have been doing some work in Texas, we are aware of recent changes to platting law for subdivisions. And I think maybe some changes to the code to make it align with state law will be useful to you. And that is some initial thoughts. I think we'd love to hear your thoughts now. And if you want to ask hard questions, I'm going to pass it back to Matt. I'd be glad to answer those.
So thank you all for your patience. We really just wanted to turn it back to you and to hear from you, your questions about the project or any priorities that you'd like us to know about upfront. District Chair, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. How would you like to proceed?
We're a pretty easygoing crew here. So we'll probably just start peppering you with some ideas and questions.
Sounds good.
I'll get us kicked off. And you all certainly brought this up. I think parking is a great topic to start with. I think housing, I'm sure a large number of the commissioners will have some thoughts on that for sure and some of the other uses. Again, sort of in the spirit of, you know, thanks for sharing this context and we're excited to see some of this move forward as you all go through and do your assessment. And so really happy to be involved in this process. I think specifically, again, if I brought up parking, I think that there is certainly an opportunity for us to be more forward-thinking and innovative with regards to how we handle parking. It took maybe almost a year to get some structured parking amendments pushed through over the last year. I think there is some really positive conversations with the development community as well around cost and what the market will bear for those types of things. But I do think in general, I would say my, you know, my preference is that we don't necessarily need to be incentivizing huge parking lots anymore, I think, with any of our newer developments. And so I think certainly looking at that and being very pragmatic about what's truly needed, especially towards our goals of having these, you know, more dense, walkable neighborhoods, especially with regards to things like the neighborhood services, small-scale retail as well, being very, again, I'll use the word pragmatic, about what is truly necessary versus what may be too much when there's so many valuable things that we can do with this land. Right? One example, you know, I would hate to have an extra couple dozen parking lots if there's an opportunity for some public art, right? And again, I'm not trying to be specific necessarily, but I think being mindful about our space and how we're presenting developments, I think, is a great opportunity for us.
Do you think there's an opportunity or an appetite potentially in Flugerville to not have minimum parking requirements in some areas?
I think it may make sense. I would say I don't necessarily have a strong personal opinion on that, where I would go quite so far. But I mean, I think it's worthy of conversation, though.
It's worthy of conversation, but we do not have public, we opted out of the public transit authority here. So we do have Fetch-A-Ride, which is our, we opted out in 2001. It was a very different community in 2001. And so the current city council has been working on gap fixes. So right now, you can get a Lyft ride to the Parkin Ride. So I would imagine the community would have a very strong negative reaction to no minimum parking spots because we don't have public transit and our neighbors to the north just attempted that. And it kind of is at odds with equity oddly. You would think it'd be the opposite because lower income, less likely to have a car, but you have to have a car here.
On that note, mobility, we talked about this all the time. I've had the privilege of talking about mobility issues and other public transit for the last three years that I've been involved. It's something that's, I view it as a massive opportunity for Flugerville, right? Flugerville, is our motto still between a rock and a hard place? Is that still, has that changed?
That is not our motto. We are not defined by our neighbors.
Thank you. So my point to that is, like, it's describing our place as a place between two more interesting things, right? And so one of the things that stands out to me about mobility, so I've got some notes here, mobility issues, right? We have an opportunity, I think, as a community to decide to take very forward and actionable steps as it, you know, impacts mobility because it wasn't a forethought. And, you know, from historical conversations that I've had with other people who've been here a lot longer, allegedly, it was something that was actively, you know, pushed against just because, you know, we don't want to be like Austin, we don't want to be like, we're going to insulate ourselves from those things and not engage in that growth. And then the growth happened. And now we're dealing with trying to play catch-up and trying to integrate with the community in this metropolitan area at large. And so, you know, in terms of how the code ties into that, I don't really know how to advance that as an issue. But, you know, public transport is one of the biggest missing pieces that we could really take a bold step forward and try to advance on, either with trams, with a better cab system. I love trains and I keep trying to convince everybody it's a good idea. Or just a people mover, something, right, that makes it more accessible. When I started living in Flugerville in 2012, we lived in Saris Creek, which is at Wells Branch and 35, which, you know, Flugerville doesn't touch 35, which is another issue. But the closest public transport was the Tech Ridge Center, which was at Heatherwild and Palmer. So I would have to commute, you know, two miles to get to a place that had public transport so that I could get downtown Austin or whatever. Solving that would be, I think, a massive assistance here. So, you know, however that happens with the code, I'm certainly open to those issues. I think also on the parking front, one of the things, I was actually in downtown Round Rock about two weeks ago, and there was a noticeable, nice experience that I had in terms of parking. It's at the intersection of Mays and Main Street. One of the, I don't know when this happened, but in the last, say, five years or something, they actually cannibalized, I think, four parking spaces per corner, on the corner. So there was no hard, there was no parking at the hard corner. And we were, we noticed, it was a noticeable public space where people were like standing and waiting to go in the restaurants or go into the outdoor venues or wherever. And there was, wow, like, this is working, this is amazing. And so I think that if we're going to really focus more on a more walkable or more moving city, that's not as car-focused, like, I mean, make every intersection like that. It was amazing to see how many people were standing around. I mean, make every intersection like that. It was amazing to see how many people were standing around, congregating, having interactions just outside waiting. So things like that.
I think that's a great example. I, I totally agree. I think they've done a, a great job of, uh, they, like you said, they've taken away some of the street parking. There is ample structured parking around there that is not further than a block or two away from most of the places that you're going in that area.
We park in the garage.
Yeah. Um, and I think.
And there's a bar on top of one of the garages.
I didn't experience that.
Oh, well, sorry, you missed out. From the, um. You know, and again, not necessarily code related, but I think one of the neat things that they do is they use those areas. Uh, and, uh, they program them, right? You'll frequently see live music on one of those corners or artists doing things.
There was an accordion player out there. There was a guy just busting on the corner and playing accordion. And, you know, my kids got to play the accordion, right? Like, it was a very, like, interesting, uh, engaging experience.
So pocket, so, um, adding. Parking spot, pocket parks is what I'm hearing as something that could potentially be in code. That's not necessarily a total policy change that needs to go to the council or could go to council easily. Cause I also wish we had public transit, really frustrated that we don't, but also aware, you know, policies.
So this is a, this is a conversation that comes up a lot too. So it sounds familiar because we've had it a lot. You know, one of the things that, that's also really unique about Flugerville is we really don't have a place where, like, everybody's in Flugerville. We go out of Flugerville to. Work, to play, to eat, like, and, and, you know, it's a function of, I mean, you can just look at a map and go, oh, well, this wasn't. And so now we have these mobility issues that, that come up, you know, to get from, uh, you know. The intersection of forty five and thirty five, or forty five and one thirty over here to the other side of town. It either takes a toll road to get there quickly, or it can take, you know, thirty minutes to cross town just to go to a soccer practice. Um, and so, you know, I don't know how the code can be reshaped to incentivize or. Spark development of office space or places where people want to come and, and stay and, and, you know, kind of. Build that, you know, walkable ten minute community. But those are the, those are like the high reaching goals of. Of all of us that are, you know, as we've, it's been, we've talked about is like, we would like to be, have people here, let the development be here. We're also facing economic challenges of, you know, construction costs being astronomical. So how do you balance that and incentivize that development and make it meaningful? And not make it just, you know, slap dash and then, and then, you know, to, um, your associate's point, greenfield development is easier. Well, it's out there. And so you gotta keep going east. And if you keep going east, then all your buildings are rooftops. And you're not building like neighborhoods with a grocery store and a little strip, like a strip center or a shopping center in the community, that kind of thing. So. Um, you know, we've been talking about that for years.
I think to riff off of one of the things that you, you touched on too, with regards to the types of businesses that I think we want to. Incentivize by making it easy, you know, we see a lot of restaurants. Um, go to our, our neighboring towns. And I think I'll throw out an example of. I think a problem we have in our existing code is if you want a, uh, you know, sort of neighborhood locally owned. Coffee shop or cafe, the way they're going to make their money, given mobility, is by having a drive through. And our code does not necessarily facilitate it easily to have a compact, um, drive through type of experience through a. Small lot, you know, not a, uh, you know, not a large building, um, some outdoor space for patio. And so I think that's one very specific area where, um, I've actually asked a couple of like small business owners of like. What, you know, when you look at this code, like, do you think this would be difficult? And they're like, yes, it actually would be very difficult for us to like put up a small cafe on a small lot.
I would push back on that.
Sure, yeah.
I would push back on that because when, when we think about what we all leave town for, it's not places that have drive throughs. Um, what the, those places have that we don't is foot traffic. And the way you get foot traffic, I think, is hotels or residential. And we've seen with the mixed use residential, to your point, that the, the retail's not necessarily coming. And we have one hotel in city limits, five? Okay, I'm way off.
They are, they are. But I do have a suggestion.
Stone Hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. No, I stayed in one. Just kidding.
We have a great area to make a, it's the downtown core, which would be perfect to make the. East and West Pecan. So basically pecan, Paul Street, and then Main Street. To rezone that so we can get restaurants, we can get, um, basically we can get downtown Round Rock in Flugerville. So we can have our tax money stay here. Um, and then we can build a parking garage downtown, at the downtown core, one of those lots.
With the hotel that gets the foot traffic for the restaurants and the occupancy tax.
Yeah, but I mean, it's a, I really believe that would be the better area to put stuff in. And then you can start there and then. Because it's going to take a lot longer to get the mixed use product on, on the ground. It takes two years, maybe three to get houses, then neighbor, then resident, I mean, then retail. So you're looking at, even if somebody bought thirty acres subdivided. Into like two or three different things, you're wait, that's like five years from now. But we have downtown core where if a house was for sale. That person can sell their house to a commercial person and it would be a nice mom and pop location. And you can get the restaurant, you can get a bar, you can get a rooftop place. So that would be a lot faster. To me, that's where we should start there, in my opinion, because it gets everybody what we would like. Cause if you read any articles in Reddit, there's literally, everybody's like, what to do in Flugerville? And everybody's like, leave. So, and that's horrible because I, obviously we all live in Flugerville and I want all of our money to stay here. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, go ahead.
Just to, to react to several of those comments, um, I think an important thing to keep in mind as we do this assessment and think about the zoning regulations is that. It doesn't have to be one size fits all across Flugerville. And you've got such a big geographic area and you've got so many different place types. And the downtown is so different, um, from some of the, 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 the outer, you know, corridor based areas. Um, that can translate into different code standards. I mean, we might have parking tables that have different parking ratios that require more parking in, in some areas than others. We might allow drive-throughs in some parts of the community where they're easily accessible for small businesses. But we don't allow them in the downtown because we might, we want to keep that, you know, a more pedestrian friendly. So for all these types of things, we can be tailored. In making recommendations for different places and it's really built on the character areas that are identified in the plan.
I don't know how, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to, this has, this is different than what y'all have been talking about. Just had a great niece. I'm worried about the future. Um, I'm concerned about, um, I love the idea of infill. I love not having to extend. All of our utilities all the way out east just to have more housing. On the same, on the flip side of that same coin. When you look at the heat indexes in Austin versus Flugerville, I'm sorry, I'm always like this. Austin's heat index is always higher than here because they have done such a good job of infill. And there's a lot of concrete, it's a heat sink. So whenever we do our infill, I want us to be very conscious about. How do we make it not, how do we make, how do we green it up, if you will? So that it's not such a concrete heat sink. Let me take a second.
Nice little concrete jungle. You don't want that. Correct. Yeah. There's tons of ways to do it.
Yeah, I'm really, oh, let me, let me, one more thought. Um, well, I lost it. Oh, well, it's just, um, water is a huge consideration in Texas. LCR, our ages today, I noticed on our evening five o'clock news, they are making it less restrictive. Instead of a twenty percent conservation, now we can be at ten percent conservation because our lake is now at forty two percent full. And so that's good, that's a good thing. But that's not going to be our long extended future. So I would like to see, and I don't even know if it's legally possible, since we're in the state of Texas. I would like to see us do rainwater collection mandates for, uh, big structures. If you've got a place to collect water, I love like those beautiful tanks that we have at our public library. I, I love those.
Yeah.
They're beautiful in my, for me. And so when we have landscaping mandates, we also should have rainwater collection. Whether it's above ground or below ground.
Yeah, I think, you know, I had a, a very similar.
Before we do water, uh, going back to the restaurants, I don't know how detailed we can get in the code. But I have had also small businesses tell me, you know, they're really excited about the new mixed use development, blah, blah, blah. But if the building shell, if the lease isn't coming with a commercial kitchen already built out, it's outside of their ability to invest in. So I don't know how detailed we get on that, but if we can have, if we want a mixed use that has restaurants and cafes. Then we need to build it with at least the vent traps. I know, um, some of the business owners have talked to some city staff. I don't know who. Uh, has been talked to and who hasn't. Um, and I'm guessing that's, that would be further in the weeds than what would necessarily come before us, but.
I mean, not really. That's a great, so yeah, grease traps and grease traps are cheaper if it's, um, gas. And if it's propane, it's more expensive. So it would be better to have like the restaurant retail in a more gas centric location. And then I want to go back to parking. Um, so. It depends on where the location is to either be minimally, like zero parking requirements, which everybody's going to have parking. But like zero, if you're a five thousand square foot retail building and you're a dentist, you don't need sixty spaces. You need like ten, maybe fifteen. And then that way you can have a bigger space and you can have a more, you know. Nicer, cleaner location. But if you're in a big retail like a HEB, which is very big, so I'll slim that down to. Aldi. Yeah, you need more parking. So I'm kind of on the fence with requiring parking, like a parking amount.
So onto the, back to the restaurant thing, one of the, and then the, the grease trap built in. So this conversation came up three years ago about the difference between being developer friendly and business friendly. Right? Big conversation about what does that mean? You know, the developer comes in and they go, ah, look what we're building. We're going to build this for you, right? We're going to give this to you. And then it's going to be up to your citizens and your business owners to cover the cost of the development through their lease fees. And through their independent development. It'd cost a half a million bucks to build out a restaurant space, right? And that's just in kitchen and, uh, equipment and furniture. And so then the question is like, well, how do we take the code and make it not necessarily less developer friendly? Cause we want them to come in, but we also want to make it more friendly for our citizens and the people that they're going to serve, right? Cost of living, cost of goods, cost of restaurants, cost of everything are so significantly higher, especially in this region, right? Well, how do, how do, how do you say to a developer, like, well, instead of, you know, we're going to incentivize you a thousand percent to just come in. We're going to have you come into this great thing, right? Well, look, as a developer, we, we love, we're so thrilled that you're here. We're so thrilled that you've considered Flugerville as a place to put your, whatever it is on the ground. But also, we all, we, we don't want to just have a piece of bacon, right? We want it to make it acceptable and, and something accessible that's for everybody here. I think those are, those are big considerations. And I don't know where in the code there's opportunities for that. Well, I, those are great examples. And, and the code is a place where, um. You can really try to identify the obstacles or the barriers to things that you want to see and to try to incentivize the things that you, that you want to encourage in the future. So, uh, you, you've already got some incentives built into your code. I mean, you've got like expedited approval processing for some types of applications and things. But there's an opportunity for a whole lot more. And I think that's something we'll explore, uh, with you all. But, um, I do, I do just want to clarify that we're not going to go so far as to get into building code requirements or things like that. Or talking about, you know, uh, the requirements for grease traps or things like that. So. What we have the opportunity to do is to look at the land use patterns that would support, uh, these different uses that we're talking about. We're not going to get into, you know, a tram versus a people mover, but we'll get into designing land use patterns that will facilitate. Uh, the easier implementation of those kind of investments in the future. So I think, you know, writing new zone districts or beefing up your mixed use zone districts to really enable and encourage that type of development. To make it cheaper for, we'll try, we'll talk to the development community and figure out where the obstacles are to them in their eyes. And try to eliminate some of those moving forward so that you can really encourage that type of density in places where you think it's appropriate, where the plan calls for it.
So I think, um, so there's a couple of different types of developers. There's the smaller developer, you know, the, the. The four investors are best friends and they go buy land and they want to go put a building on there. That's a different investor than a Holiday Inn or a Hyatt. Those are different developers. So, um, I think it comes down to obviously the cost. So, and there's a lot of fees associated with just buying land and then getting approvals. Um, we have a few different fees here. Um, so there has to be some kind of structure to allow. The building process to happen because it's about two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot to build. And then on top of all the fees. You're looking at like an extra hundred and fifty in fees potentially. And then you still have to pay to get your building built. Um, so that kills the four people in, at the backyard barbecue talking about, can't wait to open that dentist's shop. I don't have a dentist, but you know, um, so I think some of those fees need to be, uh, looked at. And then I think that we were talking a while back about, uh, water reclamation, like we have. An ability to get people to use the non-podable water. So it'd be nice to give them a rebate to use that, which again, we could do something with rainwater. So it's not all about development, but it's about, it is all about development and keeping the money here. But we have to find a way to get developers here to build and then, then the people will come.
Yeah, I have one, one comment. Small businesses can afford to run it.
I have one thing I wanted to add to water and then I want to talk, we're going to run short on time. And I'm sure there's a million other things we'd love to, love to throw your way. Um, I did want to mention on related to water, we are investing, um, starting this next year in more, uh, purple pipe. And so I think to the extent that we can make sure that our, our codes, um, support where that is available, where we're making those investments. That those, um, those areas are, uh, are including that. And then I think I, you know, again, sort of a little bit philosophically, I think that, um, you know, some of the thing. It sounds like this is your approach and I just want to say it out loud, um, and feel free to chime in here. I think that I don't know that we need to compete, uh, in a race to the bottom for fees. I think we have underinvested in a lot of our infrastructure and that's a major issue that we're dealing with now. I do however, think that, and I've heard this feedback from some developers who have chosen Flugerville. Is that our time to market, I think, is a huge opportunity, right? Are you going to take three years to build something in Austin just to get some permits? Or are you going to come to Flugerville where we have the aspire plan? We can tell you exactly where we want your type of development and we can make it. These are, whether it's equity inclusion, whether it's mobility, whether it's, um, you know, affordable housing. So I think that, uh, I think it's important that the proposal and the ideas sort of tie back to that of how does this make us more competitive? Um, because we're in an extremely competitive market for these development dollars. Um, and we've made it pretty clear that we don't just want the mixed use apartment buildings, right? Um, we do recognize that we need some of that, but it's not all, everything, right? And so we want to be able to compete on those different levels. So I think making sure that the framework supports that type of investment and the level of vision that I think our community has. With the services, the housing products that we're looking for is going to be critical. Um, and I think that's where we can be more innovative and forward thinking in some of our updates. So that was kind of a philosophical piece. Uh, one more thing and then I'll let you respond as well. I, I would also love for us to be able to. Uh, and perhaps this is, uh, more for city staff than, than the engagements that you're working on. To not wait to start implementing changes two years from now, right? I know your project goes through this fall and you're doing the assessment and then somebody's got to write it and somebody's got to pass it. And it's got to go through all of that. I would love to see that chunked out into a more iterative fashion. So that we can, again, go impact competitiveness. The sooner we can make some substantive changes to incentivize, make things easier, um, in the fashion and aligned with our vision and goals. Um, the better off we're going to be. And so to the extent that you all can be creative about. Whether it's the way that things are packaged up, or if it's like, hey, there's like ten things that like, we've heard from all the stakeholders we need to do. Let's figure out a plan of how we can go implement that stuff quickly instead of, um, you know, let's, let's cut down our own processes and times. In the spirit of further speeding up, um, what we want to do.
That, that's a great point. Just, just on the way you structure the overall project. Um, a lot of communities sometimes want to front load really pressing issues. Uh, I worked on a code years ago in Arizona and they were having a couple of big problems with, um, loss of native cacti, the big swaros. Uh, and also they were getting some really cruddy multifamily. And before doing the rest of their code update, they, uh, front loaded, uh, emergency ordinances on those two issues. So protection of the cacti and better multifamily things in McKinney. I mentioned that project and we did a collection of short term. Uh, priority amendments there before doing the rest of it. So that's definitely a possibility. Um, on the incentive piece, I, I couldn't agree with you more. It needs to be a variety of approaches there. It's not just looking at the dollar amounts. And that's why I used the expedited processing as the, as an example of, of, of a good approach. Um, I think, um, it's, it's, it's a very holistic thing. And sometimes the fees might need to go up, like you say. And we talked with the Parks and Rec folks today and the park development fee, the, the development fee that you have in the code. I think is now, uh, close to ten years old, something like that. Uh, and it's not been raised. So. It, it's a complex issue that requires a lot of looking at, at a lot of different things, but trying to figure out where the pain.
But trying to figure out where the pain points are for all different people that are trying to invest in the community is a very important exercise.
So I want to do one more thing and then I would love to spend the last five minutes or so to touch on housing to the extent we can. The one other pretty tactical thing since we're talking about infill previously, a decent amount of our available infill spaces are oddly shaped and we pretty frequently get variances that come through the commission around ways that folks can get creative about their use or the layouts and setbacks and things like that. I think that is an area where we could probably help to push on some of those infill areas where we've got strange trapezoidal, you know, or triangular areas where, you know, design standards would rather have those types of things spelled out for folks so that they don't have to ask for variances for, especially to the extent that we want to see that infill happen.
Agreed.
Housing?
Housing. More of it? More of all types of it?
So I think it's more of a, I don't know where the line is between policy and writing the regs, but we talk about equity and we talk about diversifying our housing stock and we talk about 10 minute communities in our, in our 2040 plan, but we don't really talk about housing affordability. And we are more affordable than the surrounding communities and we are more affordable than the national average, but we are significantly less affordable than we used to be and we're trending up. And so, again, there's a line between policy and code, but if there is something, if the, if the city council wants to pass a policy, then now is a really good time because we'll be writing the code to include, you know, X percent units affordable. And, and by affordable too, we don't necessarily mean section eight. I mean, we mean teachers and government employees, like people making $50,000 a year.
Teachers can't afford to live here. We need them.
Not unless they marry well.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, there needs to be a discount for teachers and nurses and, you know, first responders, yeah.
Welders.
Welders, yeah, the people making less but still making enough money.
The people building this stuff for us and the people working in the cafes.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, I do think, you know, you mentioned a couple of things that are obviously top of mind for many communities right now, right? Especially on the residential side, you know, lot widths, setbacks. We, we've actually seen a couple of, I think, really nice products around cottage courts, et cetera, that are, that are supported. I think there's probably, would love to see more examples of, of innovative ways to allow different types of, of housing. I recall a zoning case we had not too long ago, well, at this point it's been several months, of, you know, it was essentially, you know, the size of two or three standard residential lots and they wanted to do a set of tiny homes, which, fine, I think there's infrastructure issues, which were, you know, super important in that type of situation where you're increasing density in a little neighborhood. But I think, you know, again, not trying to be prescriptive about that, but I think that to the extent that we can enable people to get creative in the ways that they're creating, hate to use the word affordable housing in the same sense that you all are, but more affordable housing in different entryways and pathways to people to be able to both own and rent housing, I think is, it's absolutely critical.
A big part of it is just more variety, just getting more housing options out there for different people at different stages of their life and different sized families. We saw good examples today on our tour of how the SRMU, is that it? SFMU is, it, it speaks the language about those types of housing products, but it doesn't really provide them on the ground and it's being used as a tool, like Jenny said, just to take advantage of that 40 foot requirement.
Honestly, with the market, what it is here though, we can have all these different types and people will, it's not, it's still not affordable. Like just having a mix of types of housing isn't going to get us where we need to be because we are having, you know how explosive our growth is, you looked.
Well, it's, it's a collection of tools. It's, the, the, the variety is one part of the puzzle, but it's, it's also looking at the fees and it's also looking at, you know, can there be improvements in the process that might potentially translate into cost savings that can be passed on to the buyer? It's a variety of things. There could be an inclusionary requirement, like you said.
I think the, yeah, I really would advocate for the inclusionary requirement.
You know, I think related to variety, I, I think one of the opportunities that I've, I've seen a couple of locations that we haven't really taken advantage of yet are redevelopment. You know, specifically we have some light industrial areas. Quite frankly, and as sad as it is, sometimes schools close. And I think that there are some communities that are doing really innovative things about, whether it's retail, whether it's live work, whether it is housing. And so I think, again, looking at that full ecosystem of different types, I think would be, would be really interesting for us to be able to explore and potentially support.
Guntown Denver right now is doing a big study of underutilized office space that can be converted to, to housing. They've identified like 10 buildings. Any other comments? I know we're running short on time. We will, like I mentioned, we'll be putting a, a survey up online and so we'll be sending you all the link to that. And we would love any more feedback that you have. So it could be high level philosophy, it can be detailed, you know, line edits to parts of the code. So we'll be sending that out to you and we'll give you several weeks to respond to that. So I would look forward to more feedback. All right, well, thank you all for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is rolling into the next thing. Yes, all right. Well, that concludes our work session. We'll reconvene for the regularly scheduled planning and zoning commission meeting here in a few minutes.